Welcome, everyone. Welcome to our June, what's the date? June 10th? All right. And I'm always thankful for rain when we get it, but I'm also praying to the power-to-be that pull it out a little bit. Right? And hopefully, we'll get some good weather coming up. Enjoy the summer. So with that, I'd like to, my speaker's not on. With that, I'd like to say pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody for a public comment? Sure. Honored Scott?
Doctor Combsup, Doctor Bob.
Absol.
I just saw that paving was on the agenda for today.
Yes.
And here to listen about that. And I hope you're planning on talking about paving to North Orsonage Street.
We are going to be on a very quick update on paving, so sit tight. Things changed dramatically today. We were planning on a much more extensive conversation, but I'm going to turn it over to Rick in a couple of minutes to answer your question.
Okay. I can just tell you.
Can I answer Scott now? So the answer is yes. North Orsonage is on our list. It's on our party list. Oh, thank you. North Orsonage is on our list. It's on our list to do this year. We got one set of quotes for our paving project this summer, then we get another set of quotes of paving project. And so we're working through what the actual number is going to be.
Okay.
But, yes.
It's planned for this year? Something?
Something, yes. As of now, it is on the list to be done.
Because at a minimum, I mean, look, I understand the cost of redoing lots of things, but maybe, I'd love to see it repaved, but at a minimum, like repaired. Because there are certain sections that are really bad. I don't know if Kyle will notice, but every week, I sweep up about, you know, two or three pails of loose gravel every week. Because this creates dust, and it's noisy and such. So I'd love to see it completely repaved, but at a minimum repaired in some of the bad spots.
Well, I can say right now, as of now, in our bid packages that we put out, it was in the bid packages. And it's definitely a problem, and we definitely recognize it. So, I mean, you were here once. It's like, do I want to swear on my heart and hope to die that we're going to get it done, but is it on the list to be done this year? Yes, it is.
If you could swear on your heart that you would repair it for me, just because it is bad.
What do we do with a pothole? A pothole, what do we do?
You know, maybe just cut out sections and just redo sections.
We are looking at doing that, too. But yes, Scott, for sure.
Thank you.
Any other comment? No, we're going to move on. Paving.
I'll take the table, please. Well, do you want to give the rundown of our superintendent? Do you want to give the rundown of where we stand?
Yeah, so just to kind of, as I was saying, let's go out.
Hold it, hold it.
We got it. So Scott, this is to talk a little bit about what you did. So we started with getting estimates on 18 streets to be paved this year. When those numbers came in, we put those streets into priority, with North Orsonage being number two on the list. When we looked at the numbers, we figured out where we could start from being the worst to halfway. And we figured and looked at where the numbers were coming in. Now, we could get half these streets done. It really put us ahead of schedule moving forward, where we could hopefully get this village back within three years. That we need to do in a three-year plan. With continuous cuts and looking at manpower, where we can assist with the Village Highway, we had a rebid that came in today. It caused some numbers that weren't matching up and wasn't comfortable enough to be presenting it to the board or the taxpayers, to where we didn't have a firm number. So we tabled it until two weeks, until we get the numbers confirmed, because there was a glitch in the system, the way it was printing out what we wanted to change and wasn't getting it to change. So that's why it's tabled for tonight. And then moving forward in two weeks, that we can look at it, and then the board can make a decision where we want to go from there.
Kyle, can you explain just for folks who don't otherwise know why we're choosing not to do an RFP for this?
Because we have a list through New York State, and these, such as Callahan, where we're going, and Peckham and a few others. It's a strictly state-bid contract price. So we do not have to go out the bid for it. So no matter who we call off that list, it's going to be, it's going to be the program that they have to do. And we do have the state-bid numbers and ready to go. So as soon as we finalize the list on our end, and then we meet with the board, and they can decide and vote on where we're going to go from there and when. I know tentatively that it's, you know, we're looking at starting the project in October as soon as we get everything to go through. But yes, we also know that we have to go and patch some things and fix some things throughout the village till we get to that point. So you think the earliest it would be in October? That's tentatively where they said they can start. And as long as the board agrees to, you know, to do what, you know, will be proposed and where the remainder of the chips money can be used, and that's where we stand.
The plant's closed in November. So you've got that one-month window.
Yep.
Let's hope for a late winter.
Well, yeah. It just costs more money to heat. The point is, that's all about something like snow.
But I walk up to that one street, I know, I see it.
I see it.
Yeah.
You know, it's definitely been a priority for, as we've been talking about, since Center Street project, moving forward, where we're going to get these streets up to date. And I would tell you, you know, another thing that's important, too, is that, you know, I think you all know the condition of our sidewalks. And the fact is, if our roads are rough and our sidewalks are rough, then we have, you know, two of the most efficient, energy-efficient means of transportation that are not the safest. So if at least we get, like, smooth streets, and people, I think you'll notice, probably 50% of the people walk in the street. And so, you know, by having rough roads, it just makes it even more trendless.
We have started to enforce on homeowners and the sidewalks. Obviously, that's harder to manage because it's enforcing on homeowners to do their sidewalks. But, you know, that is something that the village is highly focused on, that our code enforcement officers are working on. So we're asking all homeowners, all property owners who have dicey sidewalks to be paying attention to that because we're going to start coming up with ways to really start making it uncomfortable for homeowners.
I think that's great. And I think the code is such where you can do that. I know that you probably have a limited budget when it comes to enforcement. The one thing that I would, I thought maybe doing is that, you know, when a house goes up for sale and there's an opportunity there. So typically, if the code, if the house, if the CO is not compliant or the house isn't compliant, why wouldn't we then, because don't we get notified when the house is up for sale?
We do. We can only, we could enforce on the house if we chose to, like, at that particular moment.
We get notified on every home sale. Are we going in front of the planning board?
Well, we do have ways to enforce when houses do go up for sale because if a house has an outstanding CVO or if a house has an outstanding building permit, like, whatever, then we don't allow the sale to go through until that's resolved.
Because if the sidewalk is not COVID-compliant, then you could also, at that time.
Right.
Because that's the perfect time.
Yeah, no, so we could do that. You know, we did not do that during COVID when a lot of houses were flipping. But, yeah, we could do that. But most, honestly, most of our problems are with our residents who've been here for a long time.
I just think that you would be looking for every avenue that you could.
Yeah, no, and that's a good idea. Yep.
And we have upped the hours of our COVID. Our COVID enforcement officer is now doing three days a week. Full-time. You know, full-time. So he's actually out there able to be on this stuff much more than we ever have.
Yeah. I walk a lot, so if anyone wants to know where they are.
Aren't we also enforcing in the Village Center?
Yes.
Yes, we're not limiting it to just residents.
No, she said residents.
Oh, I meant all property owners, sorry.
Yep.
Yep, we're enforcing everywhere.
Any other questions on the highway? Part of paving project?
So table for now until we get some Harvard numbers or a Harvard number.
And that should be in a couple of weeks?
Yes. It'll probably, by the end, it'll be, but consider we're going to have another board member or board meeting.
At that meeting, we're going to go over the list of streets that we're going to be trying to cover, correct?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to move on. Treasure report.
Okay, treasure report for the period in May 31st. The general fund ended the month with $249,840.91. The water fund ended the month with $58,746.2. The sewer fund ended the month with $128,107.78. Vouchers presented for payment to include the balance, hopefully, the balance of the 31st, 2425 bills. In the general fund, total $162,4631. In the water fund, $54,755.95. In the sewer fund, $33,288.55. Escrow bills totaling $1,041.25. Compost facility, $6,557.25. The water treatment upgrade, $2,115. And the Center Street project, $16,925.00.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers. Any questions?
Yeah, I had a question, actually, about the Center Street project. And I clarified it with Brandy before the meeting. This includes the $12,000 change order that we did last time, as well as...
What do they call it?
Retainage. Retainage. The problem with releasing retainage now, before they actually complete the work, is we lose our leverage over them. So we're technically, because the bill came in in May, and I know that we wanted to close this out in the previous fiscal year, we're paying them before the work has been done. So I do have a concern about that. I don't know how we want to handle that. We requested that the bill come in before the end of the fiscal year, and when bills come in, we pay them because we're good stewards of our finances. But on this particular one, I'm not sure we want to do that until the work is actually complete.
What do you suggest, Brandy?
We would normally wait until the work is completed to process a pay request so that you maintain a certain degree of leverage.
What is your delay in getting that final work done? The manhole that the...
Rain.
Does rain?
Yeah. They just need to squeeze a dry day in during the week when it's not raining.
So, you know. 2030.
And so Karen, what is, if we delay this?
We can remove it. I'll just remove it from the whole project that I completed. We can, we can just, we'll take it out.
Is it okay to move into the next one's here?
Yes, we'll take it out on this one. Just remove the toll week, and then we'll just start with the...
Okay, great. So I'd like to make a motion to amend, to remove the Center Street, $16,925.38 from that previous motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
$16,925.38.
Okay, monthly statements are provided with revenue expenditures through June 10th, 2025. I also included the May 31st ones from the prior year. So we're voting.
Excuse me, technically, didn't we just vote on the amendment that we made, Mr. Sir? Or did we vote on both amendments?
We voted on vouchers.
We voted on vouchers.
We voted on vouchers.
Oh.
You amended your motion. So I had a...
We had a motion, and then we have amended motion? That's what you're asking about?
Motion to approve vouchers as presented or more seconded. You amended the motion term of the Center Street expense for...
And so the vote is on the amended motion?
Yeah, the vote was on the amended motion.
It's on the chart, yeah. Okay, great.
Okay. Water and sewer, the June monthly bills went out. Water, $27,000.2958. In the sewer, $37,831.96. Dutchess County real property. Authorization is needed to approve an application for a corrected tax rule. Last, the grid number is 653230. To reduce that bill by $195.40 and reduce the assessment by $97,600. And that was just forwarded to me from Dutchess County. It had already gone through the grievance, but it does need more approval.
I'd like to bring a motion to approve the tax adjustment.
I'll second that, but I have a question.
Question?
Question. When that happens, so usually how our tax receipts work is we have the total amount that we're taxing, and then it's divided amongst all the homeowners, depending on their assessed values. When something like this happens, where someone's bill is reduced after the fact because of whatever grievance, does that just come out of our revenues? It's not like $195 was just spread out amongst all the other property taxpayers?
Correct. It's just a reduction of that $195 and also a reduction of that $79,600 to our assessed value.
Okay, so that's just lost revenue to us.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And last, I have budget amendments. I have some budget amendments for 2425 ending May 31st. I guess I just am bringing up the prior request for the water and sewer budget amendments that we talked about last month. And then I have some other... And I will remove the streets and the Center Street one as we won't be doing it.
Great.
So then, so that, the water and sewer ones do require a transfer from the capital for the ones that we discussed. Budget amendments, just to tie up the unit or year, just coming from one to another within their requirements.
Okay, so should we just take these in order?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion, a motion to approve the water fund budget amendments.
Second.
But I really want to hear from you about this. Thank you.
As you know, this was presented to the board last month with some surprise. And we definitely had some challenging moments for the last few months of pumps, baffle walls underneath going down, things that we did not anticipate going into the 2425 budget time. When things are running properly, out of sight, out of mind, we probably should have done, myself, a better job on looking ahead of a little more preventative maintenance. I don't want to say that we were holding on to the shirt tails of, let's get this project going down a water plant, so we didn't have to. But as Murphy Law says, it didn't work out in our favor as such. I know we presented a breakdown last month of some things. Again, between water leaks, you know, there was, there was times we had three digs going at once on the streets of Run Flit to manage the water leaks. Generators servicing, you know, turned out, you know, with a panel box, you know, $14,000 and change. Know that, you know, there's, there's a cost to fixing some of the equipment that is 40-plus years old. We know where there's no real source and where things had to be manufactured. And without a doubt, there should have been a little more, taking two steps back and being a little transparent with the board itself of knowing what was going on. But it was a pretty much, how can we get these plants going without missing a beat? So I recognize what we need to do going forward. We're hoping that with the project that started now, the water plant that this should eliminate, we know going into the 2526 in the future or the 2627, that we're definitely going to make some changes on some preventative means and hopefully budgeting for some things that, when this does happen, we're not standing here today.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Do you... And that pretty much goes, I mean, to, if you want it, it pretty much goes with sewer as well. As you know, you know, we probably, you know, there were some things that we had to take care of, you know. At the end of the day, with people going to classes and trying to get an operator and hanging on the camo, you know, where maybe we could have, if we looked at it, broke our ties with camo, but camo definitely, you know, was an asset to us to be able to get where we are today, especially with the job that Will, the chief operator, is doing.
I have a question. Some of this has increased cost for the chemicals. Is that something that in the budget moving forward?
Moving forward, we did, we did increase the chemicals, yes. Yes. Majority of it was, is yes, we increased the budget. But again, we had the pump at the lift station at the hospital go bad, which then recreates building, which getting a new pump, taking the old pump being rebuilt. So we had the backup. The pump system went Austerholm. So we had to have that rebuilt. We had to do some work to cover up some manholes in regards to the outflow along Auster Drive. So there's things that we had to do that required by DUC. So...
And so, you know, even beyond the chemicals for 2526, have we, do you believe that we've done a good job of capturing, of budgeting appropriately for unforeseen expenses?
Yes, because we did. We actually did add some things with some pumps into the sewer budget going forward that were already budgeted for.
Okay, and water, too? You're optimistic?
Water, too, and plus a lot of that's being done as we speak with the, as soon as we start breaking ground with the upgrades, even deeper in.
Okay. Okay, so you are optimistic that this is a one-time issue, and then our budget should be able to handle what we're dealing with moving forward?
That is correct.
And if it is not, we will be approached earlier for a capital transfer?
Way early.
Amazing. Thank you, Kyle.
Any other questions? The amendment, the motion was on the water. Do you want to amend the motion, include water and sewers? Is it possible?
I think we can take more of a sign.
We talked about Oklahoma already. You, you want to make them? We second in all in favor of approving the capital transfer for the water of $158,396.
Second.
Wait, we're just in the...
Aye.
Your vote, aye.
We're plugging.
Aye. Aye. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. So now we want to talk about sewer. I want to make a motion to approve the capital transfer of $47,200 to cover our item that we just discussed on the sewer fund.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments in the general fund, removing the street paving transfer funds for Center Street at $16,926. Those are the budget amendments.
Second.
Could you just add the sewer? Because I have a few of the sewer on your back.
Oh. Wait.
Sewer, sewer, general.
Right, well, I just, I did hook it down. It's in general. Is there any questions on, we have a second. Any questions on the general?
Can you repeat the motion?
The motion is to pass the general fund budget amendments for 2425.
Removing...
Removing the Center Street. The streets paving decrease of $16,926 and the Center Street increase of $16,926.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, now sewer.
How is this different than the other sewer that we just did?
Pardon?
Why is...
These are just within the departments.
Yes.
Oh, got it.
There's no transfer.
There's no transfer required.
Not mine, it's just within the department.
Got it.
These are coming out-of-line items.
Got it, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments for the sewer fund of $6,841.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then the general fund, the ones for 2526?
Yes, so this is just a purchase that kind of crossed over, was supposed to be done last year, but...
It's supposed to be done in March.
I know, but the day, two days after we passed the, but we changed the year. I said I can't go back and do it to the prior year because it's beginning in order yet, so...
No, he hasn't.
I'm requesting it to come out of contingency. And then half the sum we have plenty for $450,000.
I think motion to approve the general fund for 2526 budget amendments for $900.
Second, but...
Discussion.
He said he was going to do this in March in his drive-to-be bananas. So I think we need to clarify when something needs to be done in a certain fiscal year, that it needs to be done in a certain fiscal year.
Any other questions?
I know, you did, you did your job. You did your job. I am not, I'm not saying that you did not do your job.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that's all.
Thanks, Karen.
Okay, resolutions. We're on to task order.
Thanks, Karen.
Yep, thank you all.
Task order 53. We talked about this last, last meeting, and this was for crosswalks. Brandy, do you want to bring us up to date?
It's cheaper. It's different.
Oh, it's different. Not just cheaper?
To be cheaper, it must be different.
I'll just take out a sign.
Yeah. So I guess it comes down to just understanding what styled crosswalk the board would like to have installed at this location at Center Street and East Market Street. At the last meeting, I provided you all task order 53, which was for RRFBs, which are the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, those are the blinky ones with the signs on them. Similar to if you're in the Village of Red Hook, the one across from Village Hall. Similar to the one that's going in near Rook's also. And after some discussion about whether or not that was, you know, aesthetically what everybody wanted to see and, and the level of complication that needs to be undertaken to put those in because they are large pools holding the beacon, holding the solar panel, holding the sign, so there's a lot more mass to them. They need to be professionally installed on a, on a footing. And so they're more expensive overall to do than just the simpler style of crosswalk, similar to what is across from CBS and Cinnamon, which is not a flashing beacon, it's just a standard DOT, MU, MU2CD crosswalk sign with an indicator saying crosswalk ahead and then the pavement striping. That cost to install is substantially less than the beacon. And so we do not trigger the threshold to needing to bid the project. And in fact, we may even be able to work with Kyle's team to have them do the installation work of the signage. It still needs to be permitted through DOT. Any sort of improvements in the DOT right away do need to have a permit, but we've talked with Bill LaRose at DOT. The permit process is relatively straightforward. The village can install. There is no maintenance fee for the simpler crosswalk style, so so those are the options, I guess, for you to consider. Thank you.
So the price for this task order is $9,000 and that includes the DOT permit and working with Kyle's team to figure this out?
Correct.
Okay. And so if our team does do this, then really we're just, the only additional cost to us past this $9,000 is the cost of the sign, manpower and paint.
Correct. And it is special paint, it's not like you just go down to Williams and Grant's for paint.
The paint, I'm sure is.
And, and possibly a stencil if it does not have one yet.
I don't want to be having a stencil.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's wonderful. Thank you, Brandy.
So when it says assist the village with the installation, what would you be doing there?
So we would help him with layout and placement of the sign in the permit appropriate location if he needed such assistance. We have to do a construction observation to report closeout as well. But we would not physically be doing the installation of the sign, that would be something highway folks.
So we can anticipate that this $9,000 would pretty much close it out, we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to come back with another task order?
Not for our services.
But there would be a budget on top of that?
The, the full cost would include the materials and labor if the village were to install it.
Right.
For that, or if the village wants to outsource it, there'd be some quotes that would be obtained from local contractors who do pavement.
Okay. Do you have like a back of the envelope on this, if we?
I don't have a very recent back of the envelope. The last time we did a pair of these though was about $10,000. So this is probably $20,000 in materials and labor to have somebody do it. As you know, all the work for the municipality is prevailing wage and so there's a
Right.
There are some labor costs that factor into that.
And if we did it ourselves, the, the.
Cost of materials and then the time staff are spending.
Correct. So, but demonstrably less than $20,000.
The materials are quite inexpensive, the signs are, if I remember correctly, about $350 each.
Okay.
And the galvanized channel posts that are used are fifty bucks and
Right.
The paint's a couple hundred bucks and the stencil's a couple hundred bucks.
Okay, okay.
So we would need eight signs, or no?
You would need, I believe it is, I think we can set it up for four signs, not eight. I will have to double check that, Eleanor, though, don't quote me on that.
But it's two crosswalks.
Two crosswalks, correct. Yeah, we have to have signs for each pair.
It's not four crosswalks?
Four. Well, two on the state.
It's.
Four total.
Or on the state road, we need the signage. Painting for crosswalks, so painting the crosswalks that are aligned, parallel with the state road do not need signage.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Okay, so, sorry, this is a crosswalk across.
Right here at the corner, East Market and Center Street. Yeah, we would, we would suggest, so the location of this, the asset is East Market Street and Center Street where the new paving was just installed and the new curb ramps were just installed.
I guess I was imagining just one going across East Market, but you were saying there's going to be two.
You put a crosswalk at the location of each curb ramp, so you would have crosswalks going in all four crossing options, which means you do need additional signage.
And that's a requirement, though.
Correct, the requirement for signage comes from the Federal Highway Administration.
The Federal Highway Administration requires four crosswalks when you have the ability to put four crosswalks into a normal intersection?
It's slightly more complicated than that.
Basically.
But basically.
Okay.
I was imagining like right by the funeral home and the, and the church there, there's just one across the market and that's.
Right, but those curb breaks are not ADA compliant, and so if we were going to be painting more crosswalks there, we'd have to put in ADA compliant curb breaks. And so right here, we actually have all of the ADA compliant curb breaks.
I will not profess to be a traffic engineer, but from talking to the traffic engineers, the actual placement of a crosswalk is generally done where the volume of vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic is such that a crosswalk improves safety. And so you put the crosswalk in to help the pedestrian know where to cross and you put the signage in to help the drivers to know that there is a crosswalk ahead and there may be a fair amount of activity there. Not every intersection requires crosswalks because the volume of pedestrian movement may be very, very low. So there are thresholds that are established in the federal regulations for what's called a warrant, so when a crosswalk is warranted. And so perhaps there are other places in the village that, you know, there are people crossing there, but it's not at such a vehicular volume, pedestrian volume, that it warrants having the crosswalk. So each one technically is evaluated on a case-by-case basis for the appropriate level of signage.
And just so we're all clear, for any crosswalk newly installed that crosses nine or 308, you have to have a sidewalk, a ADA compliant curb ramp.
Correct.
And then the paint that obviously does the crosswalk.
That's correct.
And so we, at the moment, I, I have actually seen, it's hilarious, but like I've seen the like, a curb ramp not connected to sidewalks in order to abide by these regulations, but, so if, if, if we're ever in a position where, I mean, I know that you mentioned Village Green, this, the, the, the east side of nine across from Village Green doesn't have a sidewalk on it. So we can't put a crosswalk
To nowhere.
Across nine to nowhere until we actually have a sidewalk on that side of the road. And so this is when we've had moments of people saying, well, can't we just take out one of the sidewalks on one side of the street in order to, I don't know, grow a tree? This is why it's super important to have sidewalks on both sides of the street in order to make sure that we have, that we have the ability to put crosswalks in. But at the same time, the requirements for the state roads are, are much more stringent than if, say, we wanted to put a crosswalk in that just crosses a village road intersection. We still have to make it ADA compliant, but we don't have to sort of jump through the same level of ADA compliant hoops?
Discretion at that point in time.
Okay.
Whereas when you're crossing a state route, you have to have a permit, and so through that permit process, they're going to be looking comprehensively at the improvements in the right of way.
Okay.
And in fact, they asked us, do you want to put crosswalks in, when we did the Center Street project, and at that point in time, it was like, are they needed? They said, you don't have to put them in, so we left the out of the project at that point in time.
Got it, okay.
Could you take a question from the audience?
Sure, sure.
Could you just clarify, several of us were asking, could you just put in one crosswalk?
No.
No.
You have to do both sides.
All four.
All four.
All four.
Because of county or state law?
State.
State.
State, federal.
State, which reflects federal requirements.
Okay.
That's what I just understood. Yes?
Yes.
Because you go down to the one by the church and it's just one crosswalk, it's not every con, every.
Right, because that was probably installed, what, 50 years ago? Yeah.
That's sort of the legacy item that still exists in the village, but if we were to go in and rework that intersection compliant with ADA standards, there would be four, four crosswalks in.
I mean, that crosswalk isn't even ADA compliant because you have to step off of a curb in order to get into it. So. There's multiple issues with that crosswalk, yeah. Okay, the fact that this is much cheaper is great, I'm thrilled for that. I do still feel like we're putting cart slightly in front of the horse because this was going to be part of an overall fund balance conversation. Karen, do you have any idea when you might have a ballpark fund balance from 24, 25?
I will have it by the August meeting, but I'll try and have a thought have something. If everyone stops charging to a year.
If you stop getting bills dated, I mean.
So the issue is we're trying to close out 24, 25?
I know.
I can try and get a ballpark by this one.
Okay. Yeah. I mean ballpark.
Yes.
I mean, we, we were working with ballpark all spring and then suddenly we had to stop working with that ballpark until we actually closed out the year, so, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna just put what we had talked about and then go back and see what we drew down.
Yeah, because you had a fund balance report from the end of December and then we spent things out of fund balance and so that should give us.
I need to kind of update that just from March.
Yeah.
Till now.
Okay. That would be great because even though this is, we're now no longer talking about a $75,000 project, it seems like we're talking about like a $9,000 plus $5,000 on the outside project.
I'd say 30 on the outside, just if you had to contract it out.
Right. Okay. So that's a much different math. Math. But it, but it's, but it's still, you know, 30 on the outside, so.
I think the question still comes, and we debated this at the last meeting, do you want the rectangular rapid flashing devices because a lot of our residents don't feel safe just at a crosswalk? They want some sort of notification to slow down traffic.
So I don't have a problem with those signs in general. The problem is, is that one of those signs would be right in front of somebody's house. And in Red Hook, Village Hall is not right across the street from somebody's house.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about a safety issue right now, not a steady issue. And if you talk to our residents, our residents say, we're still afraid to cross crosswalk if there's not some sort of notification to slow down the traffic.
I've also spoken to residents and they all have their own priorities and they're usually elsewhere. I think it just, I think we should slow down and have more conversation.
Yeah, we're not.
Yeah, I mean.
We're still extending the conversation, Eleanor.
I mean, I, 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 yeah, I think on like the, the flashing lights versus not the flashing lights, like it's, yes, we could make everything as safe as humanly possible and then the entire village would be lit up at 10,000, you know, watts all the time. But we've chosen not to do that as part of, you know, quality of life considerations. So I, I think that we need to find a balance on that one, and if it's going to cost us $75,000 to paint any sidewalks in this village because we've decided that we have to have flashing lights to go with them, we're not going to get very many sidewalks, I mean, crosswalks.
But you gotta remember, we're talking only on the state roads, village roads would be different.
True.
Right.
The com plan wants crosswalks at every single intersection on every single state road. And I know that we're not going to do that, but like, the community has professed that desire. So, you know, I don't think having flashing lights at every single one of these intersections is a good use of our.
I agree, and I happen to think they're only necessary where they're necessary.
Right. I think they're more necessary.
The question is, where are they, where are they necessary?
Right.
Right? Because here you're slowing traffic coming into the village. Hopefully they're slowing down as they're getting into the village, but slowing them down here is an issue.
Well, I'd rather slow them down by the mobile station.
Yeah, well.
You know, so.
Light up.
Well, yeah, I mean, like we would then build a crosswalk there and put a flashing light up and like, but I think that's where we need to prioritize slowing people down. Because, you know, if they come screaming into the village and they're going 50 miles an hour here at this intersection, they've already endangered multiple intersections already, so.
I think you're repeating what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I am.
May I just offer some information? So a couple of years ago, Douglas County Transportation Council granted the village consultant time to do a corridor study for the north-south corridor and included in that some recommendations on crosswalks and things and, you know, evaluated the warrant for various crossings. We could make an inquiry to them to see if they have any opportunity or any funding to, to do that in the east-west corridor as well so that then you would have a guide to fall on and you could work on prioritizing.
That'd be great, yeah.
They came out with that request a while ago and we did not respond, so I think you're probably booked for this next cycle.
Maybe, but we could, you know, put it on the.
See if you can like, you know, I don't know.
Well, I, I don't know, I would lean on the mayor, so, you know.
That's my call to them.
Reach out, but we, we can certainly say the next time the funding is available, you know, please reach out to us, we've discussed and have a concept we'd like to explore.
That'd be great.
I think the overall consensus is we're still going to hold on this, correct?
Yes.
Hold on the task order or hold on the project?
Hold on the task order. The task order basically is the project.
Okay, I would move on.
I know you would, but we, we agreed as a board that we were going to hold off on a bunch of these projects until we could have an overall conversation on fund balance. We're not going to start spending the fund balance piecemeal until we've had a bigger conversation. We had that agreement in February, I think it was. If you're against that agreement, that's totally fine, but I'm going to vote against it.
Just remember that when we talk about road paving, same issue.
Yeah, I know.
Same issue.
I know. This is, this is why, like I was hoping to actually have the fund balance conversation back in February, using the numbers that we had back in February, and you said that that was an inappropriate conversation to have until after we'd closed out 24, 25.
And you're still saying that.
That's totally fine, then I would appreciate stop bringing these projects to our attention and making us feel bad for voting against them until we've actually been able to have that conversation.
Let me just view this information that we can have on the pile to go look for.
Yes, but it is not being presented as information, it's being presented as a resolution. So what I am asking for is, we agreed to this process and I agreed not to pitch a fit in February, and so I would appreciate not prioritizing things until we've had a prioritization conversation.
And you've asked for this to come in at this month, so we brought this one back here.
What I asked for is something that wasn't $75,000, and I also asked two weeks ago for this conversation not to happen until we've actually had the fund balance conversation. I'm not entirely sure how many different ways I can say this out loud.
Okay.
If like, we can get like a vague ballpark number out of Karen, I'm happy to have that conversation next week. Like, I don't, like, I, I'm not trying to be a jerk about this, but like, we did have this agreement that we have this excess number in fund balance and instead of spending it piecemeal because of just ideas that come across our table, we were going to have a whole conversation about it, including aspects of some things that we're paying a very high interest rate on, maybe we can pay them down, including road paving, including crosswalks, including all the things. But I feel like it's irresponsible of us to have that conversation until we actually have that conversation.
And I don't know if anybody's agreed, disagreeing, but we're just saying, here's the information, put it in your pocket until we can have that conversation. Licho, have the data.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
I want to test on the flight, we should ask maybe if it's going to be in the order of $15,000, maybe we should look for a regular line.
Yeah, if, if it doesn't have to come out of fund balance, then great.
Right, but we're not, we're not ready to have that.
Well, we're not ready to have that conversation either, but. All right.
So we're, we're tabling this until we have a fund balance conversation. Agreed?
Yeah, great news, thank you, Brandy.
Okay, we're going to move on to, again, me being a little bit anal about managing expenses in terms of our current water and wastewater projects. Because you saw, we had one come in already where we made a decision because of a water main being mislocated on the Prince, we were able to save $85,000. We said, let's put that back into contingency, but that list is continuing to grow. And we're after Delaware Engineering to say, whoa, slow down. We need to understand the process for approving all of these expenses because we need to understand at what point are we beyond the point where we've exhausted any of the contingencies that are in the budgets and how is the process for approving these? So I tried to put together a, a draft, you know, for a resolution of how to manage expenses for both our water and our wastewater projects. I reviewed this with both Delaware Engineering, our treasurer Karen and our superintendent public works, Kyle Amy, to get their input on this as well. To see how we can keep, in a sense, moving forward on our project, but when it gets to a point all these decisions are really board decisions on the spending money. Right? So this resolution is just to, a proposal to say, how can we do that? And one of the big things is, we, we're going to rely on Delaware Engineering to maintain a working list of all of the changes, right, regardless of what level they are, to, that would be available to us at any meeting to be able to move forward. So that would be the certificate tracking to monitor expenses, expenditures from the contract. And they will track all them and keep that up-to-date spreadsheet available for our review. Now the issue becomes down to, as we've had issues that have come forward and said, we need to make a decision today. Right? And if we need to make a decision today, what is the process for making that decision today on an expense that's down there in a project? So that's what I'm calling level one for the time being, where it's a proposed change that is time-sensitive and can have an impact on delaying the project. If you delay a project, you're putting the contractor on hold, the contractor's going to say, well, I'm going to move on to something else and that's going to cost you more money to come back around, but if I do it now, while I'm mobilized to do it, it's going to cost you X. So between Delaware Engineering, Karen and Kyle and myself, we said, if that total cost of change is less than $5,000 and there's contingency to be able to cover it, let the superintendent of public works authorize to approve that change and make sure we are emailed and email the board and treasurer so that we're, we're aware of it. So that's level one. Level two would be the proposed change is not time-sensitive and can be worked into the schedule without an impact. In other words, the total cost of the project is still less than $5,000. There is not sufficient contingency to cover the cost. But both Delaware Engineering, superintendent public works have reviewed it with the treasurer whose job is to help us manage these contracts and, and price going out, and have determined that it is needed and can be worked out within the total project overall. In other words, we can rob Peter to pay Paul, possibly, right? And then if that's the case, the superintendent and treasurer, both of them have to approve it and change notify the board and make sure the spreadsheet is updated. Okay? Level three would be, the proposed change is greater than $5,000 and bottom line is, regardless of what it is, it has to come through to the board. If there's an emergency in the contract, it already says 10 days to respond, that's in the contract. Problem is, it takes them three or four days to do the analysis, to come up and say, this is going to be an X amount cost of a project and so then we've lost three or four days, they get it to us, so they want a time period on how quick we can respond. So what they are proposing is that they get it to us, even if we have to call an emergency meeting to prove an expense, we have three days to respond to that change request. we have three days to respond to that change request, to answer it. So that's the three levels. I'm making this motion to approve this resolution on how to manage the cost for both water upgrade and wastewater projects, and a wastewater project going forward.
Second.
Discussion.
I do have a question.
Sure.
What would be the condition if you have a time-sensitive project, but there is no contingency, it's under $5,000, but there is no contingency?
Good question. In my mind, that would go into Three automatically. You know, because it's time-sensitive and we need to, we have to prove it. You said it was contingent.
What I'm saying, so basically, the conditions are, if it's under $5,000, then, and there is contingency, it's approvable to Superintendent Public Works. If it's under $5,000 and there isn't money in contingency, and it's not time-sensitive, then Superintendent Treasurer has to sign off. My question is, what happens if we're in a time crunch and we don't have any contingency?
My answer is that should come to us, because there's no contingency.
Because there's, okay, even at $5,000 level.
Okay, right. That's what I'm saying, the proposed change is great, well, we should say anything, yeah, we could change Three to say that.
So, but Level Two is insufficient contingency.
But it's not time-sensitive.
But it's not time-sensitive.
He's saying it's time-sensitive.
Time-sensitive without contingency.
What you need is a matrix.
I know, yeah, I need a flow chart. But so, out of curiosity, you know, our approval role with this project was with an overall budget. And so, like, if we don't have money in contingency and the Superintendent Public Works and the Treasurer approve the payment, even if it's less than $5,000, aren't we technically in violation of our role as people who spend the money?
So Level One and Level Two are all contained within the contract price, okay?
Okay, but Level Two, as you have written, is, says there's insufficient contingency to cover the costs.
But it can be worked out within the total project.
That's a robbing Peter to pay Paul. Got it, so we can prove the overall cost of the project.
So in other words, Delaware could say, listen, I know this next phase, it was bid for, let's say it's electrical, and it was bid for $100,000, and it comes in and they say, we know it's going to be 95.
Right, so now we know that we've got $5,000 somewhere in the project.
And they, and somebody has agreed, two people in this case now have agreed that it can be contained within that scope of work, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
So would there be some sort of trigger limit that, you know, I mean, you could have three of them come up suddenly and you're at 15,000, is there?
Well, again, these are independent items, one at a time, that can be reviewed, that can be reviewed and... So if there's a trigger limit of Three...
No, I'm not, I'm just saying that conceivably you could have three $5,000 incidents, and we're suddenly at 15, and that's a lot more than worrying about $5,000.
But if they're all within contingency, that's okay.
That part's okay.
And if they're all contained within the project, that's okay. If they're not, then we need to discuss about them.
Right, no, but I think, let's say we have $12,000 in contingency, and we got two for five, and then the third one for five came in, we'd be at contingency, so that would then trigger the process. So like, you know, we were said there's a, like, a finite set of money. Once you've expended it, then you've triggered the process. Does that make sense? So you're not just doing five, five-five-five, it's really...
Yes, the contingency threshold is really the gate.
And there's, just everybody aware, there's multiple contingencies. There's the general contingency, there's an electrical contingency, there's HVAC contingency, there's all sorts of contingencies built into this project. So each one would have to be looked at depending on the type of issue it is and the contingency.
How should I come up with $5,000?
Just the three of us sitting down and coming up with a realistic number that says, what is realistic for, in my mind, that I think triggers the board, right? And I think $5,000 is something that should trigger us to be able to be aware of.
That parallels our procurement policy.
Well, kind of, but not exactly. But I am concerned that we are managing this and managing it closely.
And then it says it's going to be entered into the minutes. How would we be notifying, I guess, in a more timely fashion? The minutes are always, you know, when the minutes come out, it's already been, sometimes a month, sometimes...
So one and two are just a spreadsheet. And then a spreadsheet we can review at each meeting and enter that spreadsheet into the minutes.
Yeah, it says the village board will receive a monthly report. So unless we're called into a special meeting, we'll just get a monthly report on everything that's going on.
Yeah.
Which makes sense.
Okay, I made a motion, I don't know if I had a second.
We did, you had a discussion there.
So you have a second? Any other discussion?
You didn't make the motion.
I did, I made a motion to accept the resolution, I guess I did.
I thought I said, that's what I was talking about. So just to reiterate, under $5,000, time-sensitive, no contingency is a Level Three situation.
No contingency and no...
Yeah, under $5,000, now he's adding on cabinet. Because Level Three is greater than $5,000. He's saying if it's under $5,000 and there's no contingency, and it can't be contained within the project.
Right, and there's no robbing Peter to pay Paul.
And it's time-sensitive.
Right.
That's, that has to come to us.
So basically, if there's no contingency and there's no robbing Peter to pay Paul, if there's, it comes to us no matter what.
Right, pretty much.
Yeah.
Okay, which is fine.
That makes sense.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Lydia.
All right, we've been noodling on this since, oh, March 10th, 2025. So in front of you, I sent, Eleanor sent a version this morning, and I sent another version late this morning. The version that I'm going to be talking about is the one that's called Draft Occupancy Tax Resolution 61025, it was on an email. So don't look at the one that is on the cloud.
Sorry, when did it come in?
I sent it out...
I've just been gone all day.
No, that's totally fine. I sent it out this morning at 10:55. And it was basically, it's very similar to the version that was on the cloud, but I just made a few changes. The point of this resolution is, on March 10th, the town of Rhinebeck passed a resolution requesting home rule legislation in the New York State Legislature authorizing the town of Rhinebeck to enact local legislation imposing occupancy tax within the town of Rhinebeck, la-la-la-la-la. This resolution took the village, took the village by surprise. The town chose not to discuss this resolution with the village before it passed it. In their resolution, the town stated that the town supports local tourism, but that tourism has associated costs to public services and municipal services such as road, fire, emergency medical services, and infrastructure. And it was a little frustrating in my position to read that, because the village provides the bulk of that infrastructure and services. And, you know, so that was frustrating. And what was also frustrating is, at the state of Rhinebeck in February, the town supervisor told the business community, as well as everybody else who was at the state of Rhinebeck in February, that the town of Rhinebeck was rich, quote unquote, was rich, and had no problems with revenue or with expenditures or anything. And then literally a few weeks later, they pass a law asking to be able to raise occupancy tax by up to 3%. So after a whole bunch of research, and this is a resolution with about a page and a half of research in it, I learned a lot about tourism in this village, about the economy of Dutchess County, about what is going on with the Trump administration's impact on US tourism in general, prices in general, the ability for folks to feel comfortable traveling, the ability of folks to feel comfortable going out to eat. And this resolution, and, oh, one thing that I thought was really interesting is Rhinebeck's economy is heavily dependent upon visitors, with 98% of all spending on lodging, 53% of all retail spending, and 48% of all restaurant spending coming from visitors outside of Dutchess County. So I know that our relationship with tourism is a bit of a dance, but our economy is heavily dependent on folks who don't live here. And I think in this particular moment in history, making things more expensive for any of us, including our visitors, is a dangerous idea. So this resolution is basically asking the state legislature to not grant the town's request. And I say in multiple points that the village is firmly opposed to this, to the town's request. But because it's government and because sometimes we lose arguments, I am also saying that if the state legislature chooses to grant the town's request, that the village board demands that the town provide a binding intermunicipal agreement ensuring that a significant portion of the occupancy tax revenue be allocated directly to the village to support tourism-related infrastructure services and economic development programs that benefit visitors and residents alike. So basically, the resolution is in opposition to the tax, but if the legislature chooses to pass the tax anyway, that they pass it with a bunch of strings attached to it so that our, so that the village, which spends most of the money, would get most of the money. So that's what this says. I don't feel like reading four pages out loud. Thoughts, comments, ideas?
I want to make a motion first.
I'd like to make a motion to pass this resolution.
Second. Now we have discussion.
So do we know how much money is in play here?
We do not. The town is vaguely estimating about $300,000.
Of revenue.
Of revenue.
Revenue.
But the town didn't appear to do a great deal of research before they passed this resolution. And it's a little unclear.
I appreciate all of the research that you put into this. Particularly striking, why is that the tax rate, the occupancy tax rate for the village or for the town, if this were to be imposed, would be higher than New York City? And place us, what was it, 30th in the country?
Yeah, so we would go from currently about 99th to 31st. And New York City is 62nd. And it would increase the occupancy tax to 16.125%.
So just for everybody, county charge is currently a 5%, you know, bed tax, right? This would make it 8%. So that's what raises it up above the bar. And some of this information, not all of it that we've collected here, is actually coming from data that we've been supplied to by the county.
Yeah.
Right, so they were very helpful in giving this information. And as Lydia mentioned, also Dutchess County Tourism, who gave us the percentages of how much money is being spent by who.
Right.
So we're not saying that it's going to impact the occupancy, right? People may still want to come and stay here. You may book your room at the Beakman or Delmont or Maribor or whatever, and you would still stay here. I'm not saying the occupancy rate will drop. What we're saying is, is that those people, everybody that does that is conscious of their total dollar expenditure. And if they're paying more for this, they're going to pay less for that. So in other words, you're not going to spend as much money in and around the village if they're paying more for staying at a lodging facility.
Or they may not spend the night here altogether. And what we've learned is that day tripper, people who spend the night here spend three times as much as people who don't spend the night here.
And that's directly from the data from Dutchess County Tourism.
Well, I've also tried to do some research, and I found that there's other places. For example, in Ithaca, there's a 5%, but Townes County has a 5%. So they have a 10% total. Weedsport in Cuyahoga County, that adds up to a 12, you know, there's some that have a 12% total occupancy tax. So the question is, you know, with that, what's the impact there? Are they, you know, they don't seem to be rescinding it. So the question is, is that not, or has that impacted, you know, their tourism? And I think that I would rather we take some time. I don't believe that this has to be done right now because the session is practically over. Isn't it just about over today or tomorrow?
No, this has to, the state...
The legislature doesn't...
Legislature has to carry this forward.
I got it, but if their session is over, then they're not...
No, no, no. They're now going into the session, New Year's session, so that they're going to be working on it now.
Yeah, this is when they are going to be working on it.
This is when they're going to be bringing it up to the table.
This is when most of the home rule additions show up. It's like in the last two weeks of the session.
I know, but I'm just, the last two weeks of the session, if the session's over, then would you mean the last two weeks?
The budget, the budget has passed.
I got that, but I'm just saying, I was talking to the legislative, well, their office, and they were saying that they're just about done. There's, the session is just about over, is what it's...
Well, then if they choose not to take it forward, then that's great.
That's what I'm saying, so I'm just wondering if...
But why give them the chance?
Because I had, as you know, reservations about some of the wording. It's fine, I mean, I'm not supporting it. Everybody else can support it if they feel strongly about it. As written, I'm not supporting it.
I mean, I think that the resolution is trying to square a difficult circle in that the town put us in a really difficult place by advancing this piece of legislation without really talking to us at all about it. And we are trying to respond as best we can to do so. And it seems like, you know, Lydia, what we've been talking about, what we're trying to do is say, look, we don't think that this tax is a particularly good idea because right now we're cognizant of the taxes that people have to pay. And this is one of the places that we can, we can control our rates. We can try to control our rates. But that decision is not going to be up to us. It's going to be up to the legislature. They may receive our input, or they may not take your input. They've already taken input from the town. But then the question is, if this tax does go through and we are the entity that bears a lot of the cost and the responsibility for running the central business district and the central tourism points within this, within the area, then we need some of that money to, or to be able to maintain services for both our residents and for the people who are coming here. So I think you've done a really good job in trying to bring these two points together. It's not a situation, I think, that we want to, we would not have created this situation if we had control over it, but we're responding to, basically, being put between a rock and a hard place in this situation.
So just to be clear, we don't get a vote, right? No, we don't get a vote on this, right? This is, the town can pass, and the town can pass it for, with the village, which is in part of the town. What the process would be, if the state legislator approves this, it then comes back to the town, and the town has to then adopt it as a law and go through the public hearing process and go through that before it becomes, goes into effect, right? So this isn't an end for all right now. There's a process that has to be followed by the state and by the town. If the town chooses to want to exercise it, and maybe it's not, maybe they choose to exercise it, it's not going to be 3%. They may exercise it, it might be 1%. No, no.
We don't.
We have no clue what's happening, because right now it's up to the state legislator, state legislation, and then once it, that's, if it's done, it goes back to the town and has to follow that whole process.
And nowhere in that process is there an official mechanism for the village to have any say?
We can participate in the public comment section.
In fact, that's what the town supervisor shared with a couple of us when we voiced concerns. She said, well, you can always just come to the public comment. And, you know, I, I am aware that, I am fully, like, I am beyond furious that the town passed this without talking to the village. I am beyond furious that... I am beyond furious that the town supervisor has not engaged the village in a conversation. I am beyond furious that the town supervisor has declined invitations to come and talk to us about this. I am beyond furious that the town supervisor told Rhinebeck Chamber of Commerce and various elected officials that the town was rich, and then three weeks later passed this particular resolution. I am beyond furious that the town supervisor informed the mayor that if the village opposed this particular piece of, that this home rule legislation request, that she would quote-unquote raise taxes on villagers. I'm just blown away with how the town and, as represented by the town supervisor, has behaved in this entire process. And the reason why this resolution took so long to draft was because it took me a long time to get it out of being Lydia at bright purple and Lydia more like what you're hearing right now.
Oh, but to be clear, we, we took time to collect the data.
Well, yes, and also a lot of the data had to come in.
We didn't want it to come in, we needed data.
We needed data, and, you know, talking to a lot of the local businesses, I mean, costs for them have spiked. Revenues for a number of them are down in double digits from the previous year. We're already beginning to see sort of the economic impact of what's going on nationally. And the town's behavior on this just seems really ill-considered.
I guess that's what I was trying to avoid when I came up with a counter resolution. I didn't want this anger to come out in the public because I would like to think that maybe the legislators would say, hey, folks, it's time you sat down together and came up with an agreement, and that maybe something would come from that and, you know, settle the issue. That's why I wanted to have a more, maybe, some more measured, maybe.
I want to, I want to set up two things. Number one, just for everybody's awareness, the county last year passed the 4%, went up by 1%.
That's right.
We didn't get a vote.
Right.
Right? So they went from 4% to 5%, nobody got a vote on that.
And they keep, what, 90% of that revenue?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So having said that, there is a perceived process here where it goes. And number two is, it's not, is the whole town board voted on this?
Yeah, I know.
To be very clear.
I know.
It's, it's not just a particular person, it's the town board who voted to vote this forward.
Yeah, and I'm beyond out to collect it with all of them at this, on this particular issue.
So the issue is, we need to take a, you know, we so choose, we're just taking a stand on our opinion of it, and that's what we're doing.
That's fine, I'm just disagreeing with some of the information in that stand because I think that it's a challenge because it's anecdotal or because, you know, it's nat, it's international trends or national trends which may or may not be applicable here. So I think a stronger argument would be to, you know, to try, like I said, cool down and then maybe we can have a discussion. If you're worth a try, that's my two cents.
In any conversation with the town supervisor, she has not shown any inclination to share the revenue with us without being forced to do so. And I feel like this is probably one of the only ways that she would be forced to do so.
No, I wanted, I did share with you that she did offer to share revenue.
Oh.
Right, but with under stringent rules. We did, we talked about that.
Has she, has she put that in writing and signed it in blood?
No.
Right.
But I said, I said the offer was there.
Right.
You know, to talk about a sharing of revenue, but what those rules are and the guidelines for it remain to be seen.
Yeah, I would like to see that, you know, if they have the authority to do this, then they are forced to do that. I don't want this to be based on, you know.
That's what I'm seeing.
Yeah, no, I know, exactly, and so that's also the point of this. We've had enough conversations with the town where they've offered to do something where the next day they've turned around and taken it back, so I'm uninterested in relying on anybody's goodwill for this particular one.
So Elmer, I appreciate your, your, your concerns in terms of approach, and I actually, I prefer this approach because I feel like we have to lay down a bit of a marker, and we have to say, this is, this is where we're coming from. And there has been a lot of discussion back and forth, and I realize that sometimes there are times when it is much better for us to kind of have comedy and relax and have a, have a good conversation. But I think in the way that this whole idea has come to us, and the way it's been presented and the way it's been discussed, that, for me at least, I feel like we need to push back pretty forcibly. So I appreciate what you're saying, that we need, and eventually we're going to have to come to some level of, hopefully come to some level of agreement with the town about this, but I do feel like as a strategy, or as where we're at, if we don't push back hard now, then we're not going to get the traction. So that's, I, I'm kind of knowledgeable what you're saying, but I'm saying I disagree with you for this reason.
Discussion done? All in favor of approving the resolution for opposing the town of Rhinebeck's request for home rule legislation, authorizing the town of Rhinebeck to enact local legislation imposing occupancy tax within the town of Rhinebeck? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you all.
You guys have a question, please?
Can I, Karen?
Thank you, Karen.
All right, we're going to move on. Minutes approval. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for 5:13:25.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I was wondering if we could hold off because I've been away all day and these just came in at like 1:00 or something. I have not had a chance to read either one of them.
Do we have a draft that is posted, Martina?
No.
So at some point, we either need to post these or put the draft.
Okay.
So it's just you?
Yeah, that's.
They have to go off?
That's fine, I just would appreciate a chance to read. I mean, generally, they're fine, I just would appreciate, you know, having the opportunity to read them.
You can also state it if you want.
Yes, but that's not the same as being able to amend it if there's something that happens, you know, I think might not be correct.
All right. What do we do? Are we amended or not?
I don't mind holding it off.
Yeah, I don't care.
So then somebody make, can make the amendment, amend the motion to hold off until our next meeting for the approval of the minutes of 5:13:25.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for 5:27:25.
I sent in a bunch of comments for those.
I would also appreciate if you could hold off on those.
Okay, if we're going to hold off on this and you're going to post the draft, I'd appreciate it if you post the draft with the comments, I'd say.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, amend the motion to, to approve for the minutes for 5:27:25 to bring them back to the board at our next meeting for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Rick?
Okay, the tree commission has no action items for the board, but it does want to open a can of worms.
Great.
Great, yes. And, and here's the can, here's the can of worms. The can of worms has to do with site plan approval and long-range follow-up for landscaping plans. There is an issue within the village with site plans that are approved, and then either the applicant never fulfills their site plan, or over the, over the years, the site plan, trees die, shrubs die, things change, and we have no mechanism seemingly to enforce the continued maintenance of a site plan.
A site plan on, just to be clear, a site plan for.
Landscaping for, yes.
Because we do very much on the building.
On the building, correct. So, and, and this is part of the can.
Trees.
Well, it's trees and shrubs, and this is part of the can of worms, that it's easy to do for a home or a structure because it's fixed, and if somebody's going to make a major change, then they come back before the planning board. But if a tree dies or some shrubberies die, that can go unnoticed, or it doesn't trigger any action. And there are places in the village where we're at, village corridors or places of sensitivity, that, that the landscape plans are no longer being followed. So the tree commission would like to open a dialogue with planning and zoning and the village board about how we can address this issue. It's not something, there are some spots, I'm trying not to name anybody in particular right now, but there are some spots that are beyond the ability of the tree commission to walk by and be able to say, oh, yeah, that's out of, out of, out of, out of spec. So I'd like to broach this topic, I'm not sure I have, we have any answers, but I would like to have a conversation with you guys about if we need to allocate money for long-term enforcement for having an arborist or somebody who's a landscaper or horticulturist to be able to follow up on some of the stuff. It means keeping some of the files open. Usually these files, something gets stamped, it's complete, and then it goes into storage, and that's the last anybody sees it. So it means having to keep tabs on, on stuff.
Yeah, Rick, do you have any sense of how many of these landscaping plans there are?
Well.
It depends on how detailed you want to be.
Yeah.
There's a handful of large projects in the village where it's more obvious that it's sort of, we need a bigger, we, we need someone who is trained in this particular area to be paying attention. One that we just passed is Six Mulberry. There's a lot of landscaping in that plan. You know, it's going to take them a couple of years to make sure that all the landscaping is up and running, even once the buildings are complete, or the building is complete. And so having someone who's not Justin, because he's not trained, he doesn't know, you know, the difference between a vibranium and a whatever it is, neither do I. So, you know, someone who's not Justin, but also that's, it's, you know, I, I appreciate that it's also asking a lot out of our volunteers to go ask someone from the tree commission who might have that knowledge, can you please go spend four hours looking at every plant on this particular site? So, and this is actually something that the planning board has been wondering about as well, because they know enough about plants to know when something isn't right, but they don't know enough about plants to know quite where it's gone wrong. And, yeah, I, I, I don't know the right answer to this question, whether we can put out an RFP for a horticulturist or a, or a landscaping person who might, you know, cut us a deal and come in once a quarter and look at all of our site plans, or, you know, be on call to be, you know, to help the planning board, even with the landscaping, creating the landscaping plans and reviewing the landscaping plans when they're presented to the planning board. So it can kind of also be like a soup to nuts thing, a little bit from the creation and also to the enforcement.
Right, so that's my concern.
Yeah.
Well, the planning board, the planning board's job is to enforce our legislation.
Right.
Right? We don't have legislation to enforce trees, shrubs, plants.
Right, but when a site plan is approved with that.
But here's my caveat to that, and that's what.
Yeah, yeah.
I've been thinking about, as well as, trees die, plants die, they have a life. How long is it, how long are they, have to abide by that rule?
Right.
That we put into the site plan? If you're a homeowner and they say you're building a new home and we want you to plant a tree there because of visibility, right? And then you plant a different, another tree somewhere else, are you in violation of your site plan? I mean, so the homeowner has the ability to change their landscaping.
Right.
They have the ability to replace dead plants. It's their home, it's their property, they own it, right?
Yeah.
Now, if they meet the site plan and then it dies in a year, is that long enough, or is that too long? Is it two years? Is it three years? Is it four years? Is it five years?
Well, and I suppose part of this is that at, sometimes fixed things are approved, like HVAC compression systems, are approved in particular locations with, on the site plan because they know that they're going to be hidden by an evergreen of some sort, right? And so then you lose the evergreen and the, the planning board never would have approved the location of the thing without the piece of landscaping that was masking it.
But then that evergreen dies in two years and the HVAC is exposed.
Right, so some of this is also.
Yo, what do we do?
Right, so some of this is also the specific.
We're not sending Justin out because the tree died.
No, but, you know, so, so this sort of also speaks to the specificity of the resolution that the planning board passes, you know.
I think we have to do something to give the planning board, that's my point.
Oh, you think this is a zoning issue?
I think we need to do something to give the planning board the power to do what they need to do.
So I'm going to say two things. One is to make an analogy, if there was a fence instead of an evergreen that was screening the condenser and the fence fell over, it would be obvious and you'd everybody go, okay, you got to put the fence back up. So.
The fence doesn't die.
Or the fence doesn't die, or it dies slowly, more slowly. It's eco-basis, everything dies. So that's why I said this is a, this is a can of worms. It's the function, right, the function, I know. So that's why I said this is a can of worms, and I want to bring it forth. And I think we need to take a comprehensive look. I want to, I'm trying to, but not trying to look for a resolution right now, but I want to get our collective heads thinking about it because it is something that the tree commission does feel like, especially in higher-profile spots with larger projects, which are approved with a landscaping plan, which usually has particular screening and other aesthetic qualities that are important to the planning board, that this problem be addressed. So I'm willing to end discussion at this point, but guys, I'd like to.
I certainly will. Thank you. Because this also, Michelle might have some ideas on this one, so.
But as I said, this is something that the planning board really wanted me to bring forward because it's been a concern.
Tree commission, tree. It's okay, the planning board wanted me to bring it forward.
That's right, the tree commission wanted to bring it forward, because it's been a concern, it's been a concern for a while, and it's going to basically require us and our collective efforts to figure out how to, how to handle this.
Is the tree commission interested in weighing in in any way?
Well, it's really a planning issue. It's really a planning and zoning issue, a planning and enforcement issue. I mean, the tree commission is cognizant of the effects because they're looking at the environment all the time, but it's not part of their charge to be enforcing, it doesn't have any mechanism, that's all lies within building, planning, and zoning. So ultimately, it's a building and planning and zoning issue.
So my thought is, we need to come back with some sort of.
Yes, and I'm, I'm going to, I'll start working on it, but I wanted just to surface this to you and put it out to the public that this is a concern.
Yeah, it's a really interesting question.
Holy grenade, you're just like, yeah.
Exactly, my job, there we go. Done, for now.
Climate Smart.
So just a couple of things. The community-wide climate action plan draft is up online, and I would appreciate if any members of the public want to take a look and submit any comment or feedback on that plan. By, I think I said, June 23rd is the deadline. I'm hoping the board will build on it at our second meeting this month. And, yeah, the other update I wanted to give is that our compost program did host a collective compost day for participants on May 10th. It went well, we have some ideas for how to make it better next year, but hoping everyone is enjoying their gardens. And then the NYSERTA grant, the CEC grant should be moving forward, the HVAC equipment being ordered for the wastewater treatment plant and soon.
Started today.
They started today. Fabulous.
They started to work today.
That's great, okay. And then finally, today, I was actually supposed to work with some high schoolers who were going to do a day of service. That project fell through today, but I still went out to the site with a couple Climate Smart volunteers. And I'm talking about the Trees for Tribs riparian bunker planting behind the highway garage, where in 2021, with some Marist students, we planted, it was like 100 baby trees that were like this big. And every so often, I'd go back there and tend to the trees, see which ones had died. Many of them don't make it. The point in doing this whole kind of scare shot, 100 plant, 100 plants, put them in, see how many survive. But now some of them are like this big. Oh, it's awesome. It's really cool. And, but, because those trees were planted in these plastic tubes to protect them from deer. deer, and protect them from weed whackers, now some, as they get that big, it outgrown the tubes. And then some of them are now, you know, fully poking out of the tubes, but the tubes have acted kind of like a brace.
Oh, so they're not strong.
And so if you remove the tube, they have no core strength, they're kind of like this. So I just wanted to surface that, because that could potentially, I could potentially use some help from the Tree Commission, if there is an appetite for staking those, some of those trees.
Sure.
So maybe we could talk about it offline, I just wanted, I just thought it was kind of cool to see the growth that's happened along that planting area, along the Landsman Kill, so I just wanted to mention it.
Want to mention the acoustic monitoring?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we also got, through that same Trees for Tribs program, they're working with a researcher, this is through the DEC, and the researcher is looking for sites that have done these plantings, and he wants to do some acoustic monitoring to understand if the wildlife has been bolstered, basically, by having these plantings along those streams. And so we were in conversation to see if this site would be appropriate.
Question. The, as part of the zoning code update, I got a question from Michelle about how much we want to, speaking of property owners owning their property and landscaping and all the rest of it, how much we want to weigh in on the riparian areas around the Landsman Kill and the privately-owned land there, and some people like mow all the way down to the creek, and some people have, you know, more of a transition zone, you know, for floodplain purposes and for kill health and all the rest of it, I know that we want people not mowing all the way down to the kill, but...
This is a little bit of a can of worms.
Yeah, it's a little can of worms.
Because people don't like to be told, let's do mower properties.
No, they don't.
So, I don't know, my approach would be education and outreach, a little bit of that, especially collaboration with their students.
Okay.
But we could do something even more, like intentionally outreach to those property owners, because it does, like, if you own property along Landsman Kill, and you're not landscaping in such a way that deters erosion or flood mitigation, you're affecting folks downstream, so we're all in this together.
Right.
Even though the American way is, you're like, my private property, I get to do what I want. So, I don't know, that would be my recommendation. I don't know enough about our zoning to know if we, we probably have some setback requirements in terms of what you can build, how close you can build to the stream.
Totally, but we're drafting a whole new flood, floodplain overlay district, so, because that's what we asked.
Yeah, so we could do something like have a plant list for plants that do particularly well in the floodplain, for example, and we could, you know, join that process if we suddenly talk about why it's important.
Cool.
Thank you.
Sure.
Eleanor, do you have any on parks?
Yep, the Bachi Court said the Thompson Mezzarella Park went out for bid, so hopefully they will be put in this summer. The Lions Club brought in mulch and spread it 6-1-25, June 1st. That was quite an interesting project. We were approached by Adeline Bungie from the Patterns for Climate Action.
Patterns for patterns.
Patterns, huh?
Partners.
Partners, or partners, huh? Sorry, partners. They have a grant, and they're looking at five communities where they could plant pollinator gardens, and so they met here with the garden club, with somebody from the Parks Committee, and we went around and looked at some possible sites. One of the sites that they really liked a lot was when you walk, when you enter the municipal lot, and just to the right of it, of the doughboy, there's that strip there, and it's got some plantings already, it has, already has things like milkweeds in it. I think the question will be, do we own that whole piece there, or does the pink house own part of it?
You'd have to point to where it is.
Yeah, we could, we could look at the plan, but I would imagine that anything, I know that it's a straight line.
I tried, yeah, I looked at the Dutch's access.
Oh, those are, yeah.
Yeah, and then I talked to Ryan, and he happily told me that the boundary could be five or 10 feet off, but that's like the whole strip, so, so that could be an issue.
But we know that there's a strip in the back.
They want a place where...
Not on the right side.
Yeah, they're looking for a place with high traffic, because they want to use it for educational purposes, they're talking about signage and so on, and they, they're could be very supportive in terms of coming in, helping with the design, helping choose the plants, actually helping maybe even with some of the maintenance for the first year.
And they pay for the plants, too?
Yeah, they, everything's paid for, yes, yes, totally. The installation, all that is paid, and at least for a year, they said that they would commit to help with the maintenance. And another site that they liked was on Crystal Lake up on top, but they're going to get back to us, because they have to talk to other communities and find out how many potential sites they have. But I thought that was, that would be kind of neat to get that started. Let's see, what's happened? Well, the doughboy, the pruning did start last weekend, we just squeezed in under the rain. The first stage of shaping and reducing the height of the burning bushes was accomplished. There was some trimming on the Western Crab Apple. Fortunately for us, that big dead branch had been removed, thank you for maintenance, for doing that, and it really already looks better. The next step is, he's going to come back in a few weeks, and I will notify everybody involved, Lupe will come back in a few weeks and keep pruning the burning bushes until they're, until they're, you know, they separate and become two separate bushes like they were, and he's also going to start working on the yews.
So, just in case anybody hasn't experienced what it's like to trim back yews when they're really overgrown and woody, is, it's a process, it takes a long time, and what you do is you actually take out about a third of the bush by going deep into the middle, and you create these little holes where sunlight can get in, and then the yews start sprouting again from the inside out. But they, they look a little, like, bombed in the meantime, and I think it's, you know, I'm always a fan of keeping plants if we don't have to tear them out, and it is a way to keep older yews contained, but it's going to take probably 18 months to have them actually be both small and look good.
Well, he's planning to do it in stages, so that it doesn't look so drastic, I mean, that's what he did with the bushes, he didn't want to cut too much.
Yeah.
And everybody would be screaming, we don't know what happened to our beautiful bushes.
But, yeah, trimming yews back is always a bit of a, it's a multi-month process.
So, next meeting is tomorrow, actually.
Okay, special request. First on agenda is the Pivotal's permit. I've been trying to understand this one a little bit, Martina, and from what I understand is the Crowe wants to have two parking spaces for a private event on July 17th. Is that really the net of it? Within the two parking spaces that are already not part of the bank, but part of the property owner, Corthaus, who owns that property, and use those two parking spaces.
Yes, they'd like to have a food truck.
Food truck.
Like the whole day?
There's no time on here.
Yeah, I think it's the whole day, because there's no times. It says from July 17th to July 17th.
So my only concern with allowing a food truck to take over two parking spaces is all of our businesses are under very strict parking space requirements, and I know it's just for a day, and I don't know what day of the week July 17th is, but...
Thursday.
It's a Thursday? It's a Thursday? Okay, thank you.
All right, so a Thursday is better than a Saturday or Sunday. So I'm more comfortable with it, because it's a Thursday, but, you know, just because Joe Corthaus owns those two parking spaces, doesn't mean that he has full permission to sort of block them off for something somewhat permanent that's not being used for a car. We get so many complaints about folks and parking and all the rest of it, I think I'm okay with this, because it's a Thursday, but I think we do need to be careful about approving too many of these kinds of requests, because our parking lots are designed for cars, not for, yeah, for parking, not for food trucks.
That's my concern, are we setting a precedent here?
I know, we voted against food trucks in the past.
We voted, we voted against a food truck that would attend the farmer's market and not be inside the farmer's market space. Yeah, I...
Well, I have two concerns, one was setting a precedent, two was how do we maintain the safety around the food truck for traffic and everything else that's there. So I have a safety concern for doing this.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm assuming Pete saw this, and did Pete see this?
At the end, there was no express safety concern.
Yeah, I didn't, I did not talk to...
Do we know, do we know which...
It's not our lot, but where does safety come in?
What's the purpose of this?
Apparently they're having a private event, and they want to have the food truck as part of the private event. The other thing, too, is which parking spaces, because right in front of Crowe is the fire lane. I mean, are they talking about, are they talking about the parking spaces, I don't know, like in front of the cheese shop? I don't know either, because if people are going to be crossing the vehicle lane in order to get to sort of the inner parking spaces, then I do have a concern for safety on that one.
Is the truck to service Crowe for a public event, or for a private event?
It says, adjacent to the Rhinebeck Bank to have a food truck for a private event at the Crowe on July 17th, 2025. So I also don't know if this private food truck is going to be accessible to the public, like if someone just walks up to it and wants to buy something. I don't know that either. I think we need more details.
I would like to see a safety plan.
I'd like to see...
Regardless of whether we own it or not, to protect people.
Yeah, I'd like to see where it's specifically going to be parked in the parking lot.
And, and also, like a sketch, because those are deeper than a regular car.
Yeah.
And you're going to have people backing up towards that, so you're going to see how much, how much space is it going to cover.
Yeah. We already made that area four feet narrower, because in order for the outdoor dining, that the park wanted, so...
Right.
Yeah.
More detail.
More detail.
Okay. Music on Market. This, again, is the Rhinebeck Chamber of Commerce submitting their annual Music on Market. It's a summer seasonal series of musicians playing outdoors for the community. Event is free and held on alternating Fridays and Saturdays from June through October. Musicians are local, small groups with a variety of styles ranging from folk to jazz to chamber music. Guests may listen to the music while walking around the village, or may be able to pull up a seat, either as they bring, available with nearby eatery or outdoor seating. So I'd like to make, and this is from, it would be Fridays from 5 to 7, and Saturdays 3 to 6, or Sundays 12 to 2, throughout June, July, August, and September. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Rhinebeck Chamber of Commerce Music on Market.
Second, is this the same intensity level of the head in the last year?
It's the exact same thing they've been doing last...
It is not.
Oh.
It is not.
What is different?
They used to only do it on Fridays, they had specific people, they had specific times, and they had specific dates.
I'm confused, this is specific dates and times?
No, they're giving you random times, it's not going to be, we don't know which ones they're going to select.
Right, hold on.
Oh, you're saying we don't know if it's going to be a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday?
Alternating, yeah.
Because they do say alternating Fridays here.
And they threw in Sundays. This used to always be Friday night for a couple hours in one location with specific people getting ready ahead of time.
I don't see Sunday, where...
Well, they do say Sunday down on the bar.
Fridays 5 to 7, Saturdays 3 to 6, and Sundays 12 to 2, throughout June, July, yeah, yeah, I, maybe she could be a little more specific.
I asked.
Okay, great.
I explicitly asked.
What'd they say?
This is what they can present, because they don't have people actually booked yet.
Got it.
So they, no, what you're saying is, they book you to play, they, we don't know if you're available on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, and so they want to have the option...
My understanding is they haven't decided yet, they haven't booked people yet, so she's asking the board to reserve any and all of those dates.
So Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in June, July, August, and September?
Yes, because potentially they will have somebody play on one of those dates at one of those times.
But not all three of the days? We don't know.
We don't know.
So can we, that's what I said, can we limit them to one out of those three days per week? Because we don't want to see them Friday, Saturday, Sunday, like they can have a Friday, and then next week they can have Sunday, but they couldn't have Friday and Sunday of the same week?
Well, do you want to have them give me, I don't know, at least a week or two, so that I can at least notify PD?
Yeah, we need to know in advance where they're playing that, and how it's set up. But I do agree, I misunderstood, I thought it was, if it's raining on Friday, it would move to Saturday, if it's raining on Friday, Saturday, it's moving to Sunday, that's not the case.
Yeah.
Because we did have to deal with rain dates last time.
Yes, and she gave me specific rain dates.
Gotcha.
This time, or...
This is a, it's a new person applying.
I know, it's a brand new person.
So it looks like we need more specific detail again.
Also, too, where they say start at 3:00 PM, but then some things start at 3:00 PM. Oh, I see, okay, start at 5:00, okay, they've got different...
Depends on the day.
Yeah, I see they're doing it this way, instead of across guy, okay.
But, yeah, I think I'd like to see a limit of once per weekend block.
Okay, so...
That gives them a rain date, sort of built in, right?
Right. Well, and, and advanced notification, I would like to add to that.
How long?
Week.
What does PD mean?
Week?
Yeah. Thank you. All right, last one is crane.
I need you to vote.
What?
No.
Well, we need more data, we can't vote until we get more information.
So are you saying May?
Are we voting on it pending?
I'd like to amend motion that we table this until we have more information. Thank you.
Very good. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, now we have a request for putting a crane to remove a tree on 28 Livingston Street. They want to use the corner of the municipal lot, which would be the northeast corner, three spaces on each side. They bring in a standard truck with a crane, park it there, remove the tree, they're going to be there for, what, three to five hours on, no, we don't have a date yet, because they wanted us to approve before they give us a date, and that's the only issue, but we reviewed this, everybody municipal-wise is okay with, as long as we get enough notification to block it off in advance, so that no parts are being parked there.
I'm fine, as long as it's not on a Saturday or Sunday.
Yeah.
We already told them that.
Yeah, that was already in condition.
And this is not inside the purview of the tree commission?
No, it's a back, it's a tree in the backyard.
They can only access it through the municipal...
All right, I think make a motion to approve the use of the crane to remove a tree using municipal lot.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Martina, recertification of the records activities.
I'm just actually Lydia.
So, as part of the requirement, if a elected person is...
Oh, that's right.
Is in the retirement system, every time that elected, so you all, thank you, approved my, like, very detailed timesheet, and I have to fill out one of those once every eight years, but you also have to fill out a recertification every time you're elected, basically saying that what I did last year is still accurate. So that's all this recertification says. Since I was elected with the midterm beginning on April 1st, I have to file this with the state.
Of course, I have that paper, and I will file it if you approve, I just wasn't going to present it, because I just want more information.
Make a motion to approve the recertification for records.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Upstaying.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, now I'm down to the best part of the meeting, anniversaries. I'd like to acknowledge the following people. Our Building, Planning, and Zoning Records Clerk, Miranda Wyon, unbelievable, three years. Thank you, Miranda, for all you're doing. Our Treasurer, Karen McLaughlin, who has left, but I'd like to acknowledge all the work that Karen McLaughlin does as our Treasurer, who has now been here, probably 10 years. And now, Tony, Water Operator, Tony Fada, 24 years. Congratulations, Tony, looking forward to many more. And Groundskeeper, Groundskeeper Tom, he doesn't have to retire, Groundskeeper Tom Johnson, been with us 24 years as well, so thank you, Tom, looking forward to many more years of you being with the Village of Rhinebeck. Okay.
Can I introduce something about the 25 years for the one...
Yeah. I thought we went to 30.
It's 20.
20?
Oh, we skipped 20?
20, that's right, 20. Please, we want the 30. All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our January, our June 10th meeting at 7:52.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.